Buenas tardes, llamo a este encuentro para ordenar. El tiempo es 5:30 p.m. En acuerdo con la Ley de Jueces Abiertas en Texas, Código del Gobierno de Texas, capítulo 551, este encuentro está oficialmente abierto con el corán presente. No tenemos ningún comentario esta tarde, así que... Lo siguiente en agenda son los informes y presentaciones. ¿Dr. Ramsey?
Gracias. Voy a primero darle a nuestro Asociado Superintendente, Dr. Gracie Guerrero.
Hola, buenas tardes. Presidente Rodríguez, nuestro Superintendente Ramsey, respetados abogados y colegas aquí. Es mi placer compartir con ustedes el trabajo que hemos estado haciendo como departamento y lo que se planea para adelante. Y cuán agradable es estar capaz de tener este taller en un momento en el que ampliamos, elevamos y celebramos y defienden el multilingüismo. En este caso, espero que vean ese espíritu a través de todos, mientras pasamos por los diferentes tipos de programación que tenemos para nuestros hijos aquí en Fort Worth. Servimos apenas menos de 30,000 estudiantes aquí en Fort Worth que están etiquetadas como "emergentes bilingües", sirviendo en los diferentes programas. Y de acuerdo con ello, continuaremos siendo capaces de destacar la programación del lenguaje que ofrecemos a nuestros estudiantes y a sus familias. Vamos a estar proporcionándoles una visión general de nuestra programación bilingüe, nuestra programación de nuevos comienzos, junto con el porqué y cómo estamos haciendo cosas aquí en Fort Worth. Primero, seremos capaces de comenzar destacando nuestro programa dual lenguaje.
Es especialmente importante para nosotros.
Sabemos que es muy importante para el cerebro.
Estamos orgullosos de su lenguaje y su cultura.
Me encanta estar en un programa dual lenguaje.
Dual lenguaje va a cambiar mi futuro.
Dual lenguaje es un regalo.
¿Cómo suena esto a usted?
¿Qué tal ahora?
Si entienden ambos, probablemente entiendan el poder de dos.
El poder de dos.
Ceremonia. Muy bien, una ceremonia es una ceremonia. Es una graduación.
Me gusta hablar dos lenguajes.
Ser biliterio, ser bilingüe, para ambos nuestros hablantes de inglés y de español. Es simplemente un mundo de oportunidades para nuestros estudiantes.
El multilingüismo es como ir al gimnasio para tu cerebro.
¿Leí la poesía en casa?
Sí, me gustó mucho. La leí en español y en inglés.
Como maestra de kindergarten, he visto cómo los niños aprenden un segundo idioma con mucha facilidad.
El pasto y el pino son parecidos.
Voy a plantear el árbol.
Creo que a su edad, a sus pequeños gusanos, lo que usted les enseñe, pueden verlo justo en ese momento.
Diferentes bebidas.
Nuestros estudiantes podrán hablar, leer y escribir en inglés y español.
¿Y luego si van a las calles?
Exacto.
El cerebro de un estudiante que está aprendiendo el contenido en dos idiomas es mucho más poderoso que el cerebro de una persona que solo aprende un solo idioma.
Como hablante de español nativo, entiendo el viaje de convertirse en bilingüe. Así que estoy increíblemente orgullosa de cada estudiante que participa en nuestro programa dual lenguaje. También estoy emocionada porque sé las oportunidades que tendrán como profesionales bilingües y líderes de mañana.
Tienen que aprender dos lenguas.
Diego es bilingüe y queríamos continuar esa tradición.
La importancia para mí como padre era que mis niños hablaban los dos idiomas y escribiera y leía en los dos idiomas.
¿Normalmente habla inglés o español en casa?
Ambos.
Es divertido entender a la gente en un lenguaje diferente.
Ofrecemos un programa de una forma en el que en el aula, los únicos estudiantes que están allí son aquellos estudiantes que hablan español y están aprendiendo inglés. Pero se enseñan en inglés y en español. En un aula de dos formas, mismo tipo de instrucción, inglés y español.
En clase de lenguaje.
Mis hablantes de inglés están aprendiendo español. Mis hablantes de español están aprendiendo inglés.
¿Cuántos huesos hay ahora?
El sentimiento de dos formas es atractivo porque no solo los niños están aprendiendo inglés, sino que los niños que quieren aprender español también están haciendo español al mismo tiempo. Y termina convirtiéndolos en muy biliterios. Y eso en el futuro va a abrir la puerta para ellos, igual que lo hizo para mí.
Este debe estar ahí y este debe estar ahí.
Y realmente amo a los estudiantes y amo verlos crecer y aprender.
Los beneficios de poder hablar, leer y pensar en dos idiomas son infinitas. El distrito escolar de Fort Worth tiene la suerte de contar con maestros dinámicos que ofrecen una instrucción de alta calidad en cada salón de lenguaje dual.
Y qué beneficio tener como padre saber que tienes a los maestros más altamente calificados en un programa basado en investigación y tus hijos obteniendo eso gratis.
Una, dos o tres.
Involucré a mi hijo en el programa dual lenguaje para darle una mejor oportunidad en la vida. Quería que pudiera hablar con otros en el mundo que no lo son.
Ayúdenme a hablar con él.
Yo pasé por esto cuando llegué a este país de México y estuve en el distrito de Fort Worth en el programa dual.
Va a hacerlo más fácil para otras personas hablar conmigo y para mí hablarles en inglés o en español.
En los últimos diez años, los trabajos que se están abriendo para personas que puedan hablar en dos idiomas han incrementado más del 150%.
Siento que abre oportunidades mayores para él.
Realmente una persona que habla los dos idiomas vale por dos.
No importa lo que decidan hacer, el español les ayudará.
Saben, nos gusta decir una superpoder para todos los niños y esa es una fortaleza que Fort Worth ISD tiene, que podemos decir que estamos desarrollando estudiantes que son bilingües, biliterios, biculturalos.
Pero también es una manera de asegurar que sus oportunidades se duplican más que cuando salen de nuestras escuelas.
El futuro está abierto y es brillante y es por eso que mis propios hijos están en dual lenguaje.
Avión, avión, ¡ah, ah, ah! Imán.
Hemos diseñado esta presentación hoy para ser una visión general de los requisitos legales que tenemos, también nuestros estudiantes, las necesidades que tienen para poder anclar la programación que ofrecemos. Queremos continuar enfatizando nuestros objetivos como contexto y propósito para los modelos de programación que verán. Así que todo está fundado en el requisito estatal que tenemos para ofrecer una oportunidad para los estudiantes que se identifican como emergentes bilingües para proporcionar oportunidades de aprendizaje en una educación bilingüe o en una educación de inglés como segunda lengua. Y podrán ver los tipos de programación que entran en cada de estas categorías. Cada vez que tengamos más de 20 estudiantes en un nivel particular hablando un lenguaje específico, tenemos que ser capaces de ofrecer ese programa. Aquí podrán ver los diferentes lenguajes que tenemos. Y por ahora tenemos los números para poder, si pudieramos, obviamente con el personal, ofrecerles en español, swahili, pascato, farc y árabe, que son los lenguajes más comunes aquí, de los cuales tenemos al menos 20 estudiantes hablando ese lenguaje en un nivel único, que son los requisitos por ley. Todo empieza con la encuesta de lenguaje de casa. Así que puede que se estén preguntando cómo los estudiantes se identifican como emergentes bilingües. Cada vez que un padre identifica en la encuesta de lenguaje de casa un lenguaje otro que el inglés, entonces eso señala que el estudiante debe ser probado. En circunstancias donde un estudiante también es un hablante de español, entonces el examen le da tanto inglés como español y eso cualifica el examen y luego la posibilidad de ser puesto. Ya han visto a los hablantes, ciertamente sirviendo apenas menos de 30,000 estudiantes. Y esto fue en el tiempo de las PIMs. Desde el snapshot de las PIMs crecieron aproximadamente 600 más estudiantes. Así que eso definitivamente muestra, como verán en el caso de edificaciones del lenguaje, en los que podemos identificar y predecir en las áreas de nuestro distrito para que podamos, de manera apropiada, diseñar la programación que se ofrece allí. Oficialmente tenemos 119 lenguajes reconocidos por la TEA porque la encuesta de lenguaje de casa permite a los padres y familias poder identificar más de un lenguaje. Entonces, dependiendo del contexto a lo que estás especificando, ese número puede variar. Pero es seguro decir que más de 100 lenguajes aquí en Fort Worth existen en diferentes aulas. Creemos que si el personal y las familias o los estudiantes están claros sobre qué son los requisitos, qué son las expectativas y qué es el apoyo, eso junto con los recursos que podemos proporcionar y el apoyo que podemos proporcionar, y luego también cómo somos capaces de emplear estos recursos, entonces el objetivo es que nuestros estudiantes cumplan criterios de reclasificación en menos de cinco años. Cada vez que nuestro estudiante se identifique, continúe llevando la etiqueta emergente bilingüe por más de seis años, entonces es cuando tenemos una categoría de estudiantes que se consideran estudiantes de lenguaje inglés a largo plazo. Tendrán una diapositiva allí en la que somos capaces de identificar dónde estamos ahora. Y tenemos más de 80% de nuestros estudiantes en el nivel secundario que se clasifican como emergentes bilingües, que también son estudiantes de lenguaje inglés a largo plazo, lo que significa que han sido identificados por más de seis años en el programa. Así que nuestros objetivos están anclados en las observaciones que hemos hecho, en las necesidades, en los recursos que tenemos y las expectativas. Y los objetivos no solo son sobre la programación del lenguaje, sino también sobre el contenido en sí. Definitivamente queremos ser capaces de mostrar que nuestros estudiantes están creciendo en inglés, como demostrado por las TELPAS. Y si recuerdan, tuvimos una presentación específicamente para eso, la primera reunión de la Junta de Representantes, creo aquí. También queremos que crezcan académicamente, ciertamente en las áreas de lectura y matemáticas, como esperamos cualquier otro estudiante. Y también, como especificado anteriormente, queremos ser capaces de disminuir el número que continúe siendo identificado más allá de seis años o más. Así que estaba hablando de esto solo antes, así que ¿dónde estamos ahora? Así que tenemos 80% de estudiantes emergentes bilingües secundarios de Fort Worth ISD que todavía se clasifican como a largo plazo. De nuevo, seis años es el marcador aquí, si han sido identificados por más de seis años y no han cumplido criterios de reclasificación. Para poder ver dónde estamos, no solo miramos los datos que ven ahí, que es generalmente en cuanto al logro en la academia y en el lenguaje también, alrededor del 20%. De nota está el último item, la tasa de reclasificación actual es menor de 1%. Tienen un folio frente a usted que tiene una tarjeta pequeña con criterios de reclasificación y ese es el criterio que nuestros estudiantes deben cumplir para detenerse de ser clasificado como estudiante bilingüe emergente. Así que actualmente tenemos menos de 1% de nuestros estudiantes que cumplen todos esos criterios también. Hicimos una búsqueda de las diferentes fuentes de datos, encubriendo a los estudiantes, caminones instruccional, grupos de familiares centrados, grupos de maestros centrados, chats administradores también. Definitivamente ser capaces de colaborar con nuestros expertos en contacto y servir en asociaciones con la equipo de currículum, equipo de transporte, etc., para poder llegar al mejor modo de ser capaces de servir a nuestros estudiantes, no solo ahora, sino también hacia adelante. Verán esta diapositiva aquí y en otros lugares de nuestra presentación porque quería poder anclarles uno de los resultados de esta presentación es que quiero ser capaz de tener claro el tipo de programación que ofrecemos aquí en nuestro distrito. Así que lo primero que podríamos abordar es la visión general de la programación dual lenguaje. Como mencioné anteriormente y como vieron en el video, tenemos un programa dual lenguaje de una forma y también tenemos campus que ofrecen un programa de dos formas de dual lenguaje también. Así que el objetivo del programa es ser capaces de producir estudiantes que no solo dominan su lenguaje nativo, sino también adquiran un segundo lenguaje. Tenemos estudiantes en aulas de una forma que aprenden solo con estudiantes profesionales en español que se clasifican como emergentes bilingües. Pero también tenemos aulas de dos formas en las que estudiantes que son profesionales y su lenguaje nativo es inglés, y no están tratando de aprender español, también están aprendiendo side by side con los estudiantes también. El objetivo es que puedan hablar, pero también escribir y también poder aprender la cultura del otro grupo también. Comenzamos en el preké y el nivel de kindergarten con 80% español y 20% inglés y llega hasta 50% en inglés, 50% en español. Cuando llega allí, entonces se queda a 50/50 durante el resto del tiempo. Esto es solo una mapa mostrando dónde están las oportunidades de dual lenguaje ahora. Y hablamos con ocho líderes de lado para revisar sus demográficas, sus intereses, su inscripción. Y ahora estamos contentos de estar ofreciendo ahora, para el próximo año, oportunidades en el lado norte y el lado oeste, en M. H. Moore en el norte y Luella Mary en el lado oeste. Ahora podríamos ver una visión general para el inglés como segunda lengua. Tenemos el ESL, como se refiere más a menudo, lo tenemos en el nivel primario y en el nivel secundario. Por ahora, el programa ESL en el nivel primario, la expectativa es para los maestros de aula que también estén certificados en ESL para poder proporcionar acceso al contenido y aprender el lenguaje al mismo tiempo. Sin embargo, entendemos que los niños llegan con necesidades diferentes y entendemos que el apoyo de nivel uno también es beneficioso. Así que ofrecemos apoyo en el nivel primario en los campus que muestran la mayor necesidad en la forma de maestros de inglés estructurado para poder apoyar, no solo en el aula, sino también para salir también. Usamos los datos que recopilamos de una mapita de hit en cuanto a dónde están nuestros estudiantes nuevos en el distrito. Y por nuevos, estoy refiriéndome a estudiantes de año uno, año dos o año tres en escuelas estadounidenses. Trataríamos de ser capaces de establecer un programa para servir a este tipo de estudiantes. Miramos dónde están en la área. Y normalmente comenzamos esos programas en esa área o región. Bueno, como pueden ver, no hay una área específica allí, están a través de nuestro distrito. Así que verán que eso sea el anclaje de ser capaces de proporcionar las oportunidades de apoyo para nuestros estudiantes. Así que luego, mientras buscamos la visión general de la programación en el nivel primario, mencioné anteriormente que necesitábamos proporcionar apoyo extra más allá de solo el maestro en el aula. Así que tenemos estudiantes que son asilores, refugiados, algunos de los cuales tienen educación previa o sin educación en absoluto. Y esos son los estudiantes que targetamos. Si un campus tiene al menos 10 estudiantes que cumplen este criterio, ofrecemos apoyo extra en el caso de un maestro de inglés estructurado para esas escuelas. Y aquí es donde tenemos la mayor necesidad. Estamos añadiendo apoyo extra en el lado norte, la zona de Cesar Chavez. Estamos viendo a muchas de nuestras familias que históricamente vivieron en la zona Clifford Davis y también algunas familias que reciben un lugar en el lado norte por las charities católicas. Trabajamos mano a mano con ellos para que podamos proporcionar servicios a las familias. Así que agregamos, debido a este dato y las tendencias y la información que tenemos, apoyo adicional en el lado norte, en la zona de Chavez. Y, por supuesto, continúo añadiendo apoyo en... and of course, continue to add support in the Clifford Davis area. Then going into our secondary support, we do have Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. Tier 1, obviously, is always with the classroom teacher. Tier 2, we have designated, structured, and expanded support for the secondary language centers. And we also have a Tier 3 support in the form of the International Newcomer Academy, INA, as it's known, and also Success High School. We'll start first at the level that provides our more intensive support for our newcomer students in their first year. And this is at the International Newcomer Academy and also at Success High School. And of course, the goal is to provide intensive support for them to be able to acquire English because they only have at most four years with us to be able to meet graduation requirements, learn the new language, and be able to be reclassified. In some cases, we also have to deal with previous unschooling or a lot of years of time that the students have not had formal schooling at all. As a Tier 2, so beyond the just extensive support that we have at the Newcomer Academy and Success High School, we also offer support at the secondary language centers. And of course, the goal is to continue providing students with content access, but also for them to be able to get stronger in English as well. The criteria that we use to be able to establish this additional support for sites as designated language centers has been that if they have at least 20 students who classify as newcomer, and then also a considerable amount of students being labeled as emergent bilingual, about the middle schools and the high schools, then we were able then to provide a plan for them of not only additional staffing, but a very structured PD plan and extra monitoring and supporting in being able to monitor students so they can be able to make their growth in English and be able to also master academics and language as well. And this is a showing of where the secondary language centers currently are. And this is where we anticipate them to be this next year. And if you recall, that heat map that was produced by our demographer of where our newcomer students are, the changes that we want to be able to make to the programming for next year is to be able to provide support for students at the sites where they are sewn to to prevent extra busting and transportation for students and to provide an opportunity for sites to be able to provide the service for their own students as well. So we'll be able to expand that support throughout the district in the form of additional language centers, both at the middle school and at the high school as well. Just being able to bring everything back to the reclassification criteria. We do want students, obviously, to be to be able to have access to content and at the same time, learn English as well. So in the dual-language program, the goal is to be able to teach them in English and Spanish so that they're able to not subtract from their Spanish language, but add the English as well, and at the same time, give opportunities for English-speaking students to learn Spanish in this case. But we also, at the secondary level, the accountability that we have is greater in the sense that our students have less years with us. So definitely, I hope you're able to see the intensified support that we have already started and are continuing to plan for the following year. A reminder that we all have to have the success criteria, and in this case, in the form of reclassification, that our students have to be able to be advanced, a composite score of advanced high on the TLPAS. And this is the test that the state gives in order to measure fluency for students in English in the areas of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. We also want them to pass or meet standards in their English STAR test and also be able to confer with a teacher as to see what recommendations they have. So this is the end goal for our students, so they can be able to meet reclassification criteria and have more access, especially at the secondary level, as we have more electives and more extra things for them to do that they don't necessarily have to have a double-time block because they still have to meet extra criteria and have an extra language class or an extra reading class. In the work that we have been doing alongside, not just with the content experts, but also with teachers and with what I believe to be an essential element at each site, is what are the principals saying? What do they need extra from us? And what do they see our programming coming? So I have here a few of the quotes that deal with appreciation of the clarity, appreciation of the data that is used to be able to guide the decisions that are made, and also the concerted support for our students, for teachers, and for site leaders that has started this year and will continue in a more intensified way this next year as well. But I wanted to be able to give you this overview so that you're able to kind of gauge where our services are, who our kids are, what the needs are, where in the district are our needs. You have in your packet different things that... Thank you to the Communication Department for helping us put this together, and also for the video that they produced. But also, you have a list there of campuses that fall under each of the language programming categories so that when you talk to principals, or when you go to sites, or you hear different discussions, you're able to see which of your campuses offer the different programming, knowing again that our students are just not in a certain side of the city, or a certain amount of schools, a certain level of schools, but they're really everywhere. And you'll also have, I believe, on the right side of your folder there, opportunities for you to engage with the community for an upcoming community conference that we'll be having soon that highlights not only experts in the field, but also our own students who are preparing different capstone projects as part of their language journey. So at this time, I conclude my presentation, and I will entertain any questions you may.
Trustees, since we have two presentations this evening, the hope is that you can do the Q and A for this section, and then we'll move to the special program. So any questions or comments on emergent bilingual programming?
Trustee Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My apologies for being tardy. Wanted to ask a couple of questions. One, regressed on TLPAS. If they regress, are there predictors that they will be long-term, six years or over?
With the chance of them continuing to be identified, yes. It increases. The goal is for them to continue to push forward. Now, I wouldn't say that it's impossible because a regression could be an outcome of, perhaps they were having a bad day, or perhaps the way they spoke was sent in a manner in which the computer was able to generate it, right? So there's different elements that are there. The goal is to be able to know where the students are, whether they're pushing forward, or if they're falling back, to be able to target that specific language domain so then they can, at their next chance of being able to demonstrate English proficiency, they're able to really show what they know.
And just some additional context. Unlike the STAR or the EOC, that's... The STAR EOC is content-specific. That is, the STAR being grade-specific. The TLPAS is by grade bands. And so that does also play a role in, as our students move into or out of a band, which way their proficiency is headed. So it's really important that our teachers are very well aware of how they're doing on their TLPAS so that we can make sure that we're continuously developing that English so that they can access the content, but also develop their English skills to be belligerent.
Right. And I also want to be able to know that one of the goals for us is to have a continuation of services, meaning that we do not want our students to start one program and then go to another school that may not have the program as structured as it is because that is for sure an element that contributes to our students being long-term, that not enough continuation of a solid program in place to be able to help them through.
Okay, so let's say I had a bad day. So I really shouldn't be in the regressed pile. How do we determine that I shouldn't be there?
Well, it's on a case-by-case basis. So there's four language domains. So in the area of speaking, listening, reading, and writing, so it could be either-or that we need to be able to target, right? And, you know, I just mentioned having a not-so-good day as a possible cause factor, but that's just one of many. The goal is for us to really be able to look at each of the language domains and how the students perform. Other teachers may also be able to say that, you know, they need to be motivated that the kids aren't taking the test seriously, that they may or may not know that they are categorized as an EB student still, and they need, and they fail to know the importance of this test as well. It's knowing the students, knowing where they're at, and how we can best be able to target what they have in order to have them show exactly what they do know as far as English proficiency in this case.
And trustees may already know this, but I don't want to say similar to an individualized... Similar to an IEP, but there's an LPAC process. And so there are conversations that are had between general ed teacher, EB teacher, parent, and typically, maybe a school administrator, where they have individual conversations about each student. And so they're able to see a more holistic approach. It's the TLPAS, it's the STAR, it's formative assessment, it's student work. And so that's where those conversations are had to try to either ameliorate, work on what plans are for the next year, what best program that students should be in, and what those supports look like. And so I'm sure most trustees already know that, but for our audience, that happens every single year on every campus of our students that are EB.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Ramsey.
Thank you. Trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Rodriguez, and thank you for this presentation. You mentioned on Slide 22, which is just a few back, that we're expanding the number of secondary language centers. Is that correct? Did I understand you correctly?
Yes.
So that, and I know that transportation to and from INA, International Newcomers Academy, and then also the Success High School can be challenging. And I've received plenty of emails regarding late buses and because they are having to transport for such long distances. However, how would it... Or do we expect that expanding these language centers will affect International Newcomers and Success High School?
So we have also set criteria that is more than just time served, you know, half a year or a year to be there. So we have seen the population there really hit a max by the time the first semester ends. And historically, we have been faced... We have been put in a situation in which INA has no more space to really be able to accept kids who may really need services coming in the second semester. So the practice has been to be able to send students to their home campus after only completing half a year at INA. So to answer your question, it does provide opportunity for those students who are most at need of services at INA or Success High School, depending on... ...equipped to be able to provide a service that has historically been left to only a specific number of schools in INA. Our goal is to be able to equip all of our sites, for now, just the language centers, in order to be able to provide that support. So it should be able to relieve INA from overcrowding so early in the year. I am not going to say that we're not going to be always reach the limit there, but will allow us to serve more of a continuous and uninterrupted basis for that whole year, students who will have a space there as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that INA and Success will still be an option for some kids. I cannot imagine moving to a country that is unfamiliar to me and then being placed in a school that is of our middle school or high school size and not speaking the language, and how very overwhelming and... I'm going to use the word terrifying, that might be. So I'm glad that INA and Success will continue to be an option for some of these students. Can we staff all these language centers?
So the way that we are staffing our language centers has been to traditionally have as much as possible, obviously, our ESL teachers and bilingual teachers are hard to come by, but to be able to have ESL-certified teachers at the language centers in all of the content areas. Well, upon being able to review the data that we have, we have only about a third of our teachers who are classified as language center teachers actually have that certification. So we're not really emphasizing the ESL certification on the teacher who's going to teach language arts and reading for that really intensive language support. So in essence, we are going to be able to staff the centers that we have proposed for this next year and to be able to offer the teachers intensive language arts support. Now, we do have the language center teachers be at the discretion of the district programming. So it's just a matter of now being able to have the best fit of the teachers at places, at centers that didn't have the language center before, but now we serve their own kids. So how do we provide that extra staff there? But we do have the staffing that's available. We just have to focus now on the intensive training that we'll be able to continue to give them because they have started to receive them this year already.
So are there stipends available or any incentives for teachers to serve in this capacity?
Yes, we currently have a stipend that's associated with the with the teachers who do teach at the language centers.
All right, thank you. On the next slide, just making sure I understood correctly, Slide 23. The students have to meet all three of these requirements? Or is it one of the three, or two of the three? They have to meet all three of the requirements? Woo, these are, these are some... This is tough.
It's not easy. It's not easy to meet reclassification criteria, yeah.
Yeah. I wonder if, and I have a very firm foundation in a first language, which in my case is English. If I were to move to another country, if I could learn another language well enough to pass some of these tests in five years. But that's just me. My last question is regarding the TLPAS, and I know that the four different components, the listening, speaking, reading, and writing. With the speaking portion, I've heard that kids often have a hard time with that because there are sometimes barriers for students, whether it's cultural or just their own personal disposition with using a microphone. Because don't they have to speak into a microphone?
Yes.
And for some cultures, that is not a welcome activity. Do kids have opportunities to practice this before they're actually being tested? How are we preparing students for... And I don't want to take a deep dive into the curriculum at this moment, but preparing kids to master these tests?
Yes, a short answer is yes. Or sites are doing a good job on being able to give students the exposure to that. Obviously, all the different elements that you just said do contribute to that experience, right? But with additional practices that they may be able to give, and obviously, it's never enough. We do hope that the time where they're assessed is not the first time that they're experiencing that. And obviously, that is a work that's in progress at the sites as well. But there's a lot of different examples that I can cite as I go into campuses, not just are they talking about how they're doing, how their students are doing as far in this four language domains, but they also cite in their planning sessions how to best be able to give students the practice in these areas. And it's something, right, that's also... And it's something, right, that's also culturally bound as well. It is a second language, and the expectation is high for students who are trying to master academic at the same time, learn a second language in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. If I hurt somebody else. Trustee Bridges.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation. More importantly, thank you for recognizing some of the language challenges we have at Clifford Davis. I guess I was a bit surprised when I saw the, when you broke down by numbers, it's for Spanish and Swahili. Is that 521? It was only, I'm sorry, page eight.
I went to the slide, yeah. What was the question? I'm sorry?
The number of Swahili-speaking families, 521?
It's 521, yes.
Yeah, it just seemed, just between Clifford Davis and Briscoe, I seem like I count, I'm kidding, there's nothing scientific about that. It just seemed, it seemed to be a bit higher. My question, would, it seemed to be a higher amount of Swahili speakers at those two schools? Are we hiring teachers to help alongside that speak the language?
So, ideally, we will be able to come across teachers who also are fluent in these languages. We do have some staff that are able to understand and speak some of the language. I know that I was talking to a teacher the other day that is able to speak three languages, but obviously, those are very hard to come by. Yes, the goal is to be able to come across those individuals for them to be able to help us with students. For now, in the meantime, we are focusing on English as a second language-specific training so that we can best be able to communicate with students and have them being able to produce English as well through instructional practices that we have seen to be effective in second language acquisition, for now.
All right. Just one last comment, and I just want to give a shout out to ODY. One of the things they're doing is going into the apartment complexes, meeting them where they're at, because there is a huge fear factor for a lot of them who've come to this country and with a lot of fear and not making those kind of connections, and how important that is that we are actually going to them and building relationships and building a trust. And I think that's important for, from a long-range perspective on how we are going to build relationship with them further down the road.
Right, and that is the best practice that we have recognized with him and that site as well, and the feedback from the families has been great.
Thank you.
Trustee Loebanos.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Thank you for this presentation. On page 11 on that, on PowerPoint, so, in six years, we should have 80% of our students on the long-term path? Is that right?
If a student makes at least a year growth in language, it is expected that they are able to master the proficiency, in this case of English, and be able to meet standards in the STAR test five or six years. If a student continues not to meet the standards that was pointing out earlier that are not very easy, you know, to meet in six years, then beyond that, they are classified as a long-term English language learner. We have some students that have been identified as emergent bilingual here since Kinder first grade who continue to be identified and they're in 11th grade or they're in 12th grade in our schools as well. So, yes.
Is this 80%, how many, how many students? 80% of the 31,000 students, 80% of the?
80% of those students who are classified as emergent bilingual at the secondary level. So, if a third of the student enrollment at a particular school is, has the emergent bilingual label, in most cases, about 80% of those have been with us since the elementary grades, and they're in the middle schools or the high schools already.
And then their reading and math, 28% and 23%, is that also 28% of the 80% of the students are?
That's 28% of the students who are emergent bilingual or meeting, or are meeting standards in the STAR. So, when you see like STAR outcomes and you see emergent bilingual, you would see 28% meet standards on the STAR test.
We should have a long way to go.
So, to your point, if we're able to have 28% of our students meet standards, then if we are having our students also grow in English as well, then we should be around the at least 15%, 20% of reclassification, because our students are, not a lot, right, but 28% of our students are meeting standards, then those students could potentially be able to meet reclassification as well. TA also emphasizes that students are able to meet that standard without any linguistic accommodations in order for them to meet reclassification criteria. So, take that 28% with a grain of salt, because some of those students did use linguistic accommodations in the STAR, and because they used even one or two, even if they use however number of linguistic accommodations, they cannot qualify to meet reclassification criteria because they needed some help.
Yeah, and I always say, like, to put a face to this, so, this is me. I did not exit being, at that time, we were called LEP, I think, Limited English Proficient.
Yeah.
I didn't exit until the end of eighth grade. And it didn't mean that I wasn't learning, it didn't mean that my teachers weren't doing outstanding job. The exit criteria is pretty stringent. And in the state of Texas, when many of our students that are monolingual are struggling to meet that writing criteria, and then our students that are developing English have to meet it at that level and have no supports, it really, really is kind of a, it's a difficult turn, it's a difficult statistic to grab, because here I am, and I think, you know, I didn't exit until high school, really, at the end of eighth grade, and yet, I went on to college, I got four degrees, like, it didn't, it didn't mean that I wasn't learning. I, it just meant that I was learning all my content, I was maintaining my home language, and it just took me a little bit longer to get up to that master's level in all areas to exit. And so, I also don't want us to think that our teachers aren't doing a great job, our students are doing a great job. We know that there's a lot of improvement, but it is, I think, this is just a think, and it's just a me, I statement, that if we had our English-only students have to go through the same criteria, they wouldn't be reclassified. And so, when you're comparing the two, it's just an extra hurdle that our emergent bilingual students need to get through. We do need to get those numbers up, but it's a, it's kind of hard until you put like a face and you say, oh, doesn't mean that they're not learning, it doesn't mean that they're not gaining competency, it doesn't even mean that they're not mastering, it just means that they're still, learning a new language, as we all know, it's really a lifelong pursuit. I'm an English learner forever. There are some times where I just don't have a word in English, and it doesn't mean that I can't find gainful employment, and that you're not, these kids are smart, they're doing all that. We just need structure, we need to make sure our kids aren't on the bus as long as they are currently, we need to make sure that we align our staffing, we align professional development, we align everything so that our students can, so we can get that number up and we can continue to develop their English. But it's a little more complex, for sure, than sometimes the numbers show.
But we are working on that, right? On all of those things.
Right, right, yeah.
How big is INA? How many students do we have?
How many do we have in there? 485, just under 500.
And that's the, what grades we serve at INA?
It's nine through, six through nine.
Six through nine, and we have 480 students, so we need a bigger INA. How many learning centers do we have right now?
We have...
That we serve students right now, besides INA and Success?
How many do we have?
130 of them at INA and 160 of them at Success.
Language centers or languages?
Language centers.
Language centers. How many language centers do we have now? Eight?
And we are, our plan is to increase that to, how many more?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty total.
Middle schools and high schools.
So, seven more.
Let me go back to the slide.
Oh, we have eight, okay. And how many students do we have at Success?
At Success, how many do you know?
We will get you that number in writing.
So, you'll be able to see exactly where they are. This year, it's obviously the one to the left, and for next year, the one on the right. And the criteria was for them to have at least 20 newcomer students in each of those areas in order for them to prevent, to prevent them from sending them away and having to be on a bus and not being served on their home campus. So, we'll be serving more students in their home campus next year.
So, right now, if we have at max at INA at 480, and if we need the space to serve those 20 students, what are we doing, or how are we doing that to, if we have no more space at INA?
Well, we have been approaching the challenge through different ways. I know that historically, sometimes we say, hey, well, there's no more room, they have to go to their home school, and at the risk of the students in a new educational system getting lost in the shuffle as well, in trying to be able to provide the structure, we hope to be able to provide more space at INA and be able to serve students who would normally be served in INA at the language centers, to be able to open up more space for that. We'll be able to keep with those numbers, not just at enrollment, but at the end of the first semester, so that we can best be able to keep tabs on that. And, you know, and the different immigration situations that happen at different times will lead to a wave or a cease of any incoming students as well. So, it's really hard to predict what will happen in that situation. But to Dr. Ramsey's point and Trustee Dar's point, meeting reclassification criteria is challenging. Our goal, and I hope you were able to see this through this presentation, is to be able to provide clarity around the programming, support for the teachers and administrators, using data as an anchor for us to be able to make different decisions, and to be able to monitor students a whole lot more closely in both English proficiency and obviously, if they meet academic standards. That's the only way that we're going to make an already complex and difficult task a little bit more doable for us as educators, for the families and for the kids themselves. So, I hope you were able to get that, that structure, that planning, the data-driven kind of programming, and obviously, for you to know the three main language models that we do offer here, so that you can know what questions to ask, you know, or what things to be able to consider as we continue to serve our students.
Yes, and Dr. Ramsey and I, we visited INA once, and I don't know how many outside classrooms we saw. Long-term, is that still the plan to have outside classrooms at INA? And now, are we trying to get away from outside classrooms?
So, that's a part of the master facilities plan for safety reasons in the long term. It's in the district's best interest and in children's best interest that we meet the needs of students in the school. We know no situation is perfect, but that is one of the items that the master facilities plan is reviewing.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guerrero.
Thank you, Trecease.
Dr. Ramsey.
Sorry. At this time, I'll call Dr. Brown to the podium to discuss special education programming.
Good evening, President, let me start the timer. Good evening, President Rodriguez, members of the board, Dr. Ramsey, I'm Tamika Brown, Associate Superintendent for Service Network 4, which includes services for students in special education. Today, I'm pleased to introduce to you Audrey Thomas, our amazing executive director who leads this charge, and will provide an overview of special education, including what the continuum of services entails, a snapshot of the students we serve, some current opportunities we have to improve services, and provide an update on the comprehensive program review that you approved during the February board meeting. We will conclude by showcasing opportunities for our greatest assets, our students. We will highlight how Fort Worth ISD is blazing a trail by working in our community and in our schools to ensure all of our students, both in gen ed and in special education, learn acceptance, tolerance, inclusivity, and empowerment through different programs in our district.
All right, thank you. Good evening, President Rodriguez, members of the board, Dr. Ramsey. My name is Audrey Thomas, and I would first like to say I'm very honored to serve on this leadership team as the leader of special education. This evening, as Dr. Brown indicated, we want to share some updates about special education, but even more, we want you and the community to know that we are passionate about the students we serve and ensure a student's disability will never be a limitation to the success he or she can experience and achieve. Across the state of Texas and within Fort Worth ISD, there has been a notable trend of increasing numbers of students identified for special education services. This trend can be attributed to various factors, including the 2018 State of Texas Corrective Action Plan that was required by the Federal Office of Special Education Programs for the under-identification of students in special education. This prompted districts to improve their identification processes. Additionally, Senate Bill 3928, otherwise known as the Dyslexia Law, mandates that all students receiving dyslexia intervention be placed in special education by the end of the 24, 25 school year. Looking over the previous three years, we observe a consistent rise in special education identification rates in Fort Worth ISD, similar to trends in neighboring districts as well as the entire state of Texas. Fort Worth ISD has grown by over 1,000 students in special education from the fall of 2021 to the fall of 2023, and this growth has continued during the 23, 24 school year. Of note, this year, the majority of nearly 600 newly identified students have been students either ages three to five or students with dyslexia. As you can see on this table, the percent of students being identified for special education services are consistent across each of our student populations. This is important to note because we want to ensure that there is not an over-representation of any one student group, and moreover, that all student groups are being served. The largest student enrollment is Hispanic at 64%. You will also see that approximately 63% of students served in special education are also Hispanic. This is consistent across all of our student groups. Fort Worth is committed to serving students in the least restrictive environment, or LRE. This means placing students with disabilities in general education settings alongside their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent appropriate. About 76% of all of our students with disabilities in Fort Worth ISD spend most of their day in general ed settings. These are students who receive speech therapy, inclusion, or resource supports, or dyslexia interventions. Only about 24% of our students with disabilities in our district spend most of their day in a specialized setting, such as RISE. In this slide, we provide you a visual of the continuum of services. Our programs include a variety of placements that each focus on supporting students and... Our programs include a variety of placements that each focus on supporting students, eliminating barriers, and providing appropriate modifications to ensure students reach their potential. Highlights of these services include early childhood special education, or ECSE, reaching reaching independence through a structured environment, or RISE. This serves students with cognitive disabilities or functional skills challenges. Our hospital homebound services allow us to serve students that are hospitalized or confined to the home, and we also have instructional and related services such as speech therapy. In addition, Fort Worth ISD has two specialty campuses, Boulevard Heights and Joe Kelly Schools. They allow us to serve students with very high needs in very specialized environments. And finally, we're very honored to serve as a regional day school program for the deaf for seven other member districts, and we have on our staff some of the most highly-trained professionals that support students who are deaf or hard of hearing. Some opportunities we've leveraged this school year include utilizing awarded autism grant funds from this Texas Education Agency to provide a series of training for seventy teachers and evidence-based strategies for working with students with autism. We also participated in the reading collaborative, ew, sorry, reading collaborative initiative and trained sixteen secondary teachers and twenty instructional coaches on research-based instructional strategies for students with disabilities. We also face our challenges, similar to school districts across the state and nation with special education positions becoming more difficult to recruit and to retain. In addition, there have been an influx of students identified for early childhood, and we have a need for less restrictive placement options for this group. We've recognized a need for a continuum adjustment within our self-contained classrooms, and staff to student ratios warrant a better balance in some of our settings. Additionally, STAR-Alt Two is an alternate assessment intended for students who have been determined to have the most significant cognitive disabilities. Federal guidelines require that no more than one percent of the tested population participate in an alternate assessment. The state of Texas until now has a has had a waiver from the federal requirement, but as of twenty-three, twenty-four can no longer exceed the one percent. The impact in Fort Worth ISD is that three hundred and thirty-five students who took the STAR-Alt Two last year will have to take the general STAR test starting this week. The special education department has worked collaboratively with campus principals to ensure master schedules reflect these students are enrolled in courses that will adequately prepare them for the assessment that they are expected to take. This next slide shows that under Child Find, which is the process for identifying a student for special education services, child in child for Child Find purposes, the district has forty-five school days from the time a parent consent is provided to evaluate the child, and within thirty calendar days of that date, the admission review and dismissal committee must meet to review the evaluation and determine eligibility for special education services. Currently, we are under a corrective action plan to address non-compliance in this area. This slide shows the compliant and non-compliant areas for Fort Worth under the state performance plan indicators. Fort Worth ISD meets compliance for indicator twelve, which looks at early childhood transition, and indicator thirteen, which addresses transition services for secondary students. However, we are non-compliant in indicator eleven regarding timely initial evaluations through Child Find. Our corrective action plan annual goal includes implementing additional safeguards for self-monitoring of initial timelines to ensure one hundred percent compliance moving forward. Results Driven Accountability, or RDA, is a system used by the Texas Education Agency as one part of its annual evaluation of LEA performance and program effectiveness. It's worth noting that RDA was previously previously called Performance-Based Monitoring Analysis System, or PBMAS. Our district's determination level and performance levels under the Results Driven Accountability System are crucial indicators of our progress and areas for improvement. These next few slides provide an overview of our status as a district as it relates to the indicators measured through this annual evaluation. After several collaborative conversations with district and campus staff and following an analysis of data, three main targets have been selected as areas of focus for the district's strategic support plan. The first area of focus is to improve STAR performance levels for grades three through eight in reading language arts. The data you're looking at shows how our students with disabilities performed compared to state expectations in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three. Performance level scores range from zero to four, with zero being the best and four being the worst. In order to obtain a performance level of zero, the rate for the district must be at the cut point or higher. The larger the gap between the district rate and the cut point, the higher the performance level score. So to orient you to what you're seeing, I'm going to use the example of the reading language arts. In two thousand and twenty-three, a total of four thousand and thirty-four students took the three through eight reading STAR, and of those students, one thousand six hundred and fifteen received a passing score. This represents a forty percent passing rate. Because we did not meet the seventy percent passing rate cut point, we earned a performance level of two. As you can see, the two thousand and twenty-three passing rates for our students were lower than the state expectations for all tested areas. We're responding to this area of focus by providing training to our special education teachers and paraprofessionals on specially-designed instruction and technical aspects of standards-based individual education plans. We're also training on how to analyze benchmark data during PLCs for trends, early identification, interventions, and progress monitoring. The second area of focus is to improve STAR performance levels for EOC, or End of Course English One and English Two. As you can see from the performance levels on this indicator, our students have the greatest gap between current perform between their current performance and the state expectation of sixty percent passing rate in English One and Two. We're responding in this area by providing focused training on available reading and writing resources. Examples include talk read, talk write, research-based instructional strategies, and additional trainings we have partnered with with Region Eleven. The third area of focus is to decrease the total of number of disciplinary disciplinary removals of students in special education. To orient you to this slide, in two thousand and twenty-three, the total and num total number of disciplinary removals of special education students was three thousand one hundred and forty. Of note, multiple incidents can be attributed to one student. Over the course of the year, nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen special education students were recorded to be in attendance. The rate of disciplinary removals was thirty-one point seven percent, which is over the nineteen percent cut rate. Therefore, we earned a performance level of two. More specifically, our data also shows that African-American students are disproportionately removed at a higher rate than other students. It's important to note that our overall RDA performance results trend over the last three years show we're doing better with our disciplinary removals for students in special education, as well as decreasing the significant disproportionality for African-American students. This is a celebration. We still have work to do, but we're trending in the right direction. In February, you approved a contract for a comprehensive program review of special education. The review the review will assess the effectiveness and the efficiency of our special education programs. As you can see from this timeline, we're currently gathering feedback from stakeholders, including parents and all staff members. Last week, a hundred and thirty-five campus site visits, twenty-nine focus groups, and multiple individual interviews with leadership were conducted. The review also includes student folder and document reviews and a comparative district study. This review will inform future initiatives and improvements in our program. I look forward to providing you with the executive summary of the findings and the recommendations as they come. All right. So to conclude our presentation tonight, we we are thrilled to share how Fort Worth ISD blazes a trail in providing premier opportunities for students in special education through different program options. The first one I want to highlight is the LEAP program at our Transition Center. This is an eighteen-plus program for students who have completed credits required for graduation and are working on specific IEP goals for employment, employability skills, and independent living. Students use the Trinity City Bus, sorry, Trinity City, Trinity Metro City Bus System to travel to various volunteer and paid employment sites. We have several community partners who provide these volunteer opportunities to help our students develop their employability skills. A few of these partners include Cook Children's Hospital, Community Food Bank, and RD Evans Community Center. Students participating in the LEAP program earn a graduation credit graduation code of fifty-four or fifty-five, which leads to a career, college, or military readiness credit. We also want to highlight an upcoming event. Every year, Fort Worth ISD proudly participates in Friday Fun Day, formerly known as Special Needs Day, as a part of the longstanding tradition of the annual Fort Worth May Fest. For over twenty years, this wonderful community partnership has provided hundreds of elementary RISE program students the opportunity to enjoy the festival at their own pace. Held the Friday before the gates open to the public, over a thousand students with disabilities are invited to Dream Park, where they engage in activities such as playing on the All Abilities Playground, visiting the petting zoo, and exploring arts and crafts booth. Partnership exemplifies exemplifies the strength of our community ties benefiting students, families, and residents alike. And our final highlight is our special is our participation in the Special Olympics. This initiative provides our students with disabilities the opportunity to showcase their talents, build confidence, and foster a sense of belonging within our school community. We're proud to support and celebrate their achievements. Allow me to introduce Lynn McGuff, our Head of Delegation and an adapted PE teacher in Fort Worth ISD, and our special guests, Irma Mercado, a parent, and Michael Mercado, a recent Southwest High School graduate, and one of our Special Olympians that qualified for competition at the statewide Special Olympics Summer Games. Lynn?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about Fort Worth ISD Special Olympics and Unified Sports. Our program offers continuous opportunities throughout the school year and encourages partnerships beyond graduation. "Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave." That is the Special Olympics motto. Having the honor and the privilege to work with our athletes, I have seen this demonstrated often during our events. Our athletes are some of the best around in both how they compete and the sportsmanship they consistently display. Fort Worth ISD provides opportunities for our athletes to compete in bowling, basketball, and track and field with Area XI Special Olympics. This school year, we had over five hundred athletes compete in competitions throughout the DFW area, earning lots of medals. Having this many athletes is made possible through a free clinic that we offer with JPS doctors who volunteer time to do physicals for our athletes, and Fort Worth Parks and Rec, who allow us to use one of their community centers for free. UIL and Special Olympics joined forces in two thousand and twenty-one to get SB seven seven six passed, which now recognizes Unified as a sanctioned UIL division for basketball, track and field, and robotics. We have two high schools that have led the way in implementing Unified Sports, South Hills High School with scorpion relays, and Southwest High School with the Southwest Unified Basketball Tournament. These events bring together our athletes and athletes from general education to compete together on the same team. Unified events have helped to create an inclusive environment and allows our athletes to truly shine. One of the best parts is hearing the cheers of the fans in the stands as their home team competes. It is reminiscent of being at a Final Four game. Last year, we had our first ever Unified Dance in partnership with Fort Worth Parks and Rec. We worked and planned together with staff from local community centers and hosted over a hundred attendees from around the district. Northside High School Cosmetology Program pampered the students with haircuts and manicures and pedicures before the big night. Students from Pascal helped with face painting and crafts, and Southwest High School Media Tech documented the night by taking photos. We had door prizes and crowned a king and a queen. It was a very magical magical night. I would like to invite all of you to join us this Friday, April the twelfth, for this year's dance. You can put on your cowboy boots and your cowboy hats, or you can come as you are, but come join us at Diamond Hill Community Center from six thirty to eight thirty PM. Our goal is also to provide opportunities for our students as they graduate and age out of Fort Worth ISD. We have partnered with TCU Unified Club, which is run by TCU students and provides social and sports opportunities for our alumni and students eighteen and older. They participate in karaoke and games night, intramural Unified Sports, and have played a Unified Basketball Game during halftime of the men's and women's basketball games each year. They even made it on the ESPN highlight. Through our partnership with Fort Worth Parks and Rec, our students are able to earn a gold membership, which is good for any community center in Fort Worth after they've completed twenty-four hours of volunteer time. We've had several transition students earn their gold membership this year, giving them an opportunity to remain active and a place to belong long after they leave Fort Worth ISD. We have lots of ideas that we hope to implement in the coming years, and if I had more time, I would tell you all about them, but my time has come to an end. I would like to say how thankful we are for the support that we have gotten from our Fort Worth ISD administration, from you, the school board, and from you, Dr. Ramsey. Sincerely, thank you. And now the best part.
Good evening. My name is Irma Mercado. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you. Special Olympics has been important and impactful to our family for over fifteen years. Our first experience was with Special Olympics Young Athletes Program. We were able to see our son, Michael, be paired up with a senior student from Arlington Heights High School. It gave Michael the opportunities to participate in his own way, and it gave his peer buddy a chance to interact with a differently able child. As the years went on, our son and his peers were able to participate in various events and activities that they might not have been a chance to be exposed to. Special Olympics provided inclusion, sportsmanship, much-needed physical activity, and most importantly, a sense of pride in oneself. Michael was invited to the Special Olympics Texas Summer Games in May of two thousand and twenty-three. We decided as a family to go support him. There were so many independent things that he got to experience that I wasn't quite ready for, but he sure was. He rode on a charter bus for the first time with his teammates. He also stayed in a hotel with his teammates and coaches and shared a room with a very good buddy. This allowed him some independence and gave him the opportunity to make sure to take care of himself without parental guidance. The teachers and coaches were amazing at keeping the athletes safe, healthy, and engaged. While at the event, we got to see the athletes of all ages participate in activities that their abilities allowed. It was so wonderful to see the joy, determination, confidence, and hard work of these athletes. Being a parent or caregiver of a special needs child is hard work every day, but being able to take a step back to see how bright these kids shine when given the opportunity was a joy and an honor. We got to see our son go out there, give it his all, and win at his event. We got to see his determination and to see how proud he was of himself. We for we will forever be grateful that Michael was able to participate in Special Olympics. Him and his buddies were able to be included, to be seen, to be cheered on, and to be recognized. Thank you to Fort Worth ISD, the teachers and coaches for providing these athletes with memories and experiences that they won't soon forget. Thank you.
This is my job?
This is your job. Okay, hold on one second. Okay, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Michael, your representation of Fort Worth ISD as a Special Olympian fills us with immense pride. Thank you for your outstanding achievement. Would you like to share with us your favorite activity?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're on. Reader, remember?
Hello, my name is Michael Mercado. My favorite activity for Special Olympics is for softball throw and bowling. I like seeing my friends. I like watching friends too. Thank you.
Good job. How can I follow that? In conclusion, Fort Worth ISD remains dedicated to providing high-quality special education that meets the needs of all students. We appreciate your support as we can continue to strive for excellence and inclusion for for all of our students in all of our district. Thank you. We're ready for questions.
Trustee Bridges?
Thank you, Madam President. First, thank you, Michael. You're the real celebrity, and thank you for being here. And Mom, thank you. You you really touched my heart about what you just shared. That really, I was really moved by that. It makes me feel being a part of the proud of being a part of this board and us having the opportunity to touch Michael's life. So thank you for coming out and sharing that with us. So thank you for coming out and sharing that with us, please. I just have two questions. Thank you. On Slide four, if you could, please. I thank you for putting this a part of your presentation because it dispels the myth that there is a high representation of certain subgroups. Could you tell me, is that a representation in other areas or is that something you need to forward ISD?
So thank you for that question, Trustee Bridges. We were actually very pleased that our data was representative across all of our student groups. We absolutely want to have a genuine representation of all of our student groups. And what you see in the data is that regardless of the percentage of students in the group, we are serving the equivalent percentage of students in special education. One of the indicators that our state monitors is overrepresentation, and fortunately, Fort Worth does not fall in that category.
Thank you. And on Slide 12, where we saw the numbers go down when it comes to African-American, could you tell me, what do you attribute success to that? What were you guys doing different to see those numbers go down?
Yes, sir. So we actually had to create a corrective action plan to address the disproportionate number of removals of African-American students in special education. This has been led by Nicole Stein. She's one of our directors. And we specifically targeted eight of our campuses that were kind of standing out in this particular data point. And we have assigned behavior specialists to support these campuses. They are on these campuses three days a week. They are supporting the administrators and the classroom teachers. They are working on de-escalation strategies. They are also working specifically on restorative practices. And what we are finding, Trustee Bridges, is that these same practices can be scaled across the district. And so it promises to really impact all of Fort Worth ISD, not just the campuses that we've had to target because of this data.
Thank you.
Trustee Phillips?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Michael, thank you, man. Yeah, your intellect shined through, man. That was beautiful. What a great job, my dude. Proud of you. Dr. Gureto, thank you very much for your presentation and the languages presentation, as well as this current presentation that we have. This, you know, I love these nights where we're talking about these things and really getting, you know, a good picture of what's happening across the district. I mean, education is so multifaceted, and we focus in on just certain things so many times. A lot of times because of the way that it encompasses so much of the majority of our community sometimes. So when we're able to have these breakdowns, to be able to see how multifaceted, how many levels that we're working with within the district and having to accomplish these things to really make that all mean something, right? I really appreciate these types of evenings to be able to dive in and be able to see these things a little clearer. Starting with, I guess, Slide five. I'm appreciative of this slide where I'm able to see the continuum of services, seeing the programming that's happening there, particularly being able to hone in and see, you know, 76% in the Inclusion Resource Therapies and Related Services. This one is just a simple request. I would love to also be able to see kind of just the numbers of participants in each program. I would love to be able to just see what that looks like as far as who we're serving within those particular programs. And then I had a question about 12. My brother Wallace Bridges did a fantastic job of being able to hone in on that a little bit more. So I guess my other question, I have two more questions. Well, one was just the first observation, but two questions. On Slide eight, talked about where we were in compliance and where we're not in compliance with Indicator 11. So I guess what is this a snapshot of as far as the time period in which this number has come forth?
Sure. So that would have been a snapshot of our Indicator 11 data for the 2022-23 school year, which would be July 1, '22 to June 30, '23.
Okay.
So this year's data will start July 1, '23 and end June of '24.
And as y'all evaluated kind of where we didn't meet that compliance, can you talk a little bit more about where we may have missed that mark?
Yes. We had a couple of areas we identified as like root causes for why those 100% indicators weren't met. One being that the state actually changed the way that they were monitoring this. With the B was a new formula that year, the 22-23 school year. And we actually found that the evaluators in the district were given bad guidance, that that was not going to count towards the indicator. So that 94% is very indicative of the fact that there was an awareness, which we've corrected.
Indeed. Thank you so much for that. And, you know, as you all have spoken about the corrective action plans that we have in place for these particular things, can you talk a little bit about what that process looks like as far as coming up with it? Like who's at the table coming up with the corrective action plans? How are we getting to consensus? What inputs are we looking at and people who are a part of that? Or just what that looks like to come up with the plan we feel like is going to do the fixing?
So the state performance plan indicators, this SSP piece, is very, very, very specific to things, compliance in special education. So typically for those conversations when we're looking at that root cause, it's really the special ed team coming together, the directors, coordinators, the leaders in those areas that, you know, that do the work that leads to these indicators, coming to the table and looking at, you know, why did we miss it, you know? And then, but the actual, that team then actually meets with TEA. We have a TEA monitor that we have an initial meeting with. We do our goal and our corrective action, and then they monitor that throughout the year. And then we have a deadline in which we have to give them our final corrective action that we've corrected the problem. For results-driven accountability, that piece is much bigger. And so we actually utilized multiple campus administrators, people across the district to come to smaller group Zoom meetings and then a larger meeting with all the principals where we did root cause analysis, looked at data together, and we picked those three target areas as a district coming together and making those conclusions.
Indeed. Well, again, really appreciative of, like I said, both sets of presentations tonight. What I'm really appreciative is is that I feel like you all were giving us the real data, the transparent data about where we are, the true snapshot. We're willing to point out where the deficiencies are and was willing to talk about exactly how we plan on fixing those. That's it. I feel like that's what we, if we can always just do the identification of, hey, this is what we are, this is what we need to fix. This is already the plan we have in place to be able to do so. That does my heart so well. So just really thank y'all for this work that y'all put in behind this. President Rodriguez?
Thank you.
Trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Rodriguez, and thank you for this presentation. Michael, you are a rock star. I, just a couple of comments and one or two questions. On page three, where it shows that our number of special populations has increased, I'm thrilled to hear that one of those reasons is early identification. Because it should go without saying that the earlier we can identify a student with a disability, the earlier interventions can be provided. And the earlier, hopefully, any modifications or accommodations can actually be removed because the ultimate goal of a special ed teacher is actually to work themselves out of a job. And now we have openings, so please come and work for Fort Worth ISD. But that's the ultimate goal, is to work ourselves out of a job. So early identification is a key part of that. I'm concerned about the 335 students that were taking the STAR-Alt 2 test that will now be required because of a percentage, not because of need, not because of the students that they are, not because of what would best evaluate the student's growth, but simply because of a percentage point that are now going to have to take the actual STAR exam. I don't know to what extent the general public fully understands the enormous leap from the STAR-Alt 2 to the STAR test and how frustrating that can be for students and teachers and parents and families as well, and administrators. Also knowing that this year, portions, the written portions of the STAR, portions of that will be graded with computers and AI. Are there, or do you know, and you may not know the answer to this question, I don't know the answer to this question, and I have a background in special ed, do you know if there will be a way to delineate some of our special ed students' tests so that they are graded by actual human beings instead of by a computer?
That's a great question. I don't have the answer, but yeah, that's definitely something that we should be asking TEA.
We'll follow up with TEA. So 75% will be AI and 25% will be teachers, and I believe that that's across the board. So there isn't a delineation or an ability for us. We don't get to choose. But it's a point well taken that we will move forward to TEA.
That may be something for some parents to write some letters about too, but that's not for you to encourage. I just happen to mention that. The last two things. One, I am really pleased to see the comprehensive program review in place. And I want it noted that that is not something this board asked for. That is something that the special ed department is doing because they know that there is always room for improvement. And so I commend you for wanting to know where to improve and bringing in outside eyes and ears in order to make sure that that happens. And then finally, it has been my pleasure and absolute joy to be able to attend several Unified Events. That is something I don't want to miss because, for purely selfish reasons, because it brings me such joy to see the joy in these students. And literally, the joy in the room and the excitement and the enthusiasm and the pride is palpable. You can practically feel it and touch it. So I would encourage my colleagues to join me on Friday night. I plan to be at the Unified Dance because it fills my bucket, and I know it will fill yours too, to see these kids having so much fun, being youth and kids and enjoying each other's company and doing all the things that kids should be doing in healthy, productive ways with a lot of adults there too that love them and care for them. So we are, Fort Worth ISD is an exemplar in this area for districts all around us in North Texas. And that is something to really be proud of. So I look forward to Friday night.
Thank you.
But if you go to the dance, you got to dance in, though.
In your boots.
We shall see about that.
Hey, I danced on Saturday for middle school kids. You can do this.
Trustee Loebenos?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. Michael, thank you for being here. You truly shine this path. Your enthusiasm, your energy that you have is what we receive. Couple of questions. What other seven districts that we serve, that Fort Worth ISD serves?
We thought you might ask that. So our, what we call a Shared Service Arrangement, or SSA, Membership District for our regional day school program for the deaf, we have White Settlement, Lake Worth, Azle, Northwest, Castleberry, Eagle Mountain Saginaw, and Alito. We currently aren't serving any students from Alito, but we could if they needed that service.
And then on Slide eight, you mentioned the 45 days that we take to evaluate.
Evaluate, mm-hmm.
Is that a standard 45 days across the state? Or is that something that we do?
It's a state requirement, the 45-day timeline.
So there is no way to make that timeline?
It could always be done in a shorter amount of time. It just can't be longer than 45 school days.
And what is our average? How soon do we?
Our average is pretty close to the 45 days just because as evaluations come in, you know, the staff are taking it and, you know, starting, and then more come in. And it's just kind of an ongoing cycle. So it's pretty typical that it takes around the 45 days.
To her point, the sooner we evaluate the students, the sooner we can provide.
Yes.
The services.
That's correct.
So is there any way that we can provide the services sooner?
We definitely, we definitely take individual cases into consideration. Sometimes there's extenuating circumstances. Our evaluation personnel are, you know, they're working at a quick pace as they can, as many evaluations as we get in. It's quite a lot.
Thank you.
Trustee Bridges?
Yeah, I just want to thank Trustee Dar for the open challenge. I just put it in my calendar. I just got a, I could not win that battle. I just have to make sure I dust off my cowboy boots and my cowboy hat. Last thing, I would hope I could get a chance to meet Mom before you leave. I just want to shake your hand again, tell you how proud we are you, and thank you for coming out.
You're going to get that chance.
Thank you, Trustee Bridges. You're actually going to get that chance. With your permission, Dr. Ramsey, President Rodriguez?
We apologize. I believe we have a question. Yes, sorry, just one more.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Dr. Ramsey. On page three, you showed special education growth. And I would love to see that as compared to other urban districts, to see where we are and where they are. And then with a comparator to the state, just an ask. The other thing is, if there are any other issues that we should anticipate, I think we've heard this board wants sped to fly, and it looks like you guys have wings. And I'm very enthusiastic about what we heard tonight, and I want to say thank you. I'd love to see you all provide updates on the regular, and I don't know what that is. I know you're busy. But it would be nice to see this progress because it's been a long time coming, and thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Jackson. And I will share with you, we did look at the trends in our region and also at the state level. And the numbers for Fort Worth are very comparative to the region and the state. So we don't have more or fewer than other districts in our region and across the state of Texas. And the same trend that you see happening in Fort Worth, that upward trajectory increase in numbers is happening in the region and in the state, at the state level. In terms of challenges, we shared just a few challenges that we've been able to identify. But of course, we do want to learn from the experts that have come in, and they're conducting the program review. We're confident that they're going to provide us even more insight into the opportunities that we have in front of us to improve services for students in special education. So we look forward to coming back to you to not only give you the executive summary from the comprehensive program review, but also our plan to address it because it's not enough to just get information, but we have to respond to it. And we want to be able to come back to you and share with you what the comprehensive program review has found in terms of opportunities for improvement, but also what we're aiming to do to improve services in the district.
Thank you so much. And Michael, I like the softball throw too. Thank you for representing us so well, and thank you for being here tonight.
President Rodriguez, Dr. Ramsey, at this time, I'd like to invite all of you to the floor for a special recognition. If you will come down. If you will come down at this time, we'd like you to join us on the floor for a special recognition.
Okay, Michael, you're on. You're on again, one more time. Michael is one of 13 students that earned their letter jacket as a Special Olympian. Students 16 years or older are eligible to earn this honor by being nominated by their teacher or coach and competing in the statewide Special Olympics Summer Games in San Antonio. This evening, President Rodriguez, Dr. Ramsey, we'd like you to present Michael with his letter jacket.
Trustee Dar.
I am sorry for those who are sitting out there that did not get to see Michael's face when he saw that jacket, because it was awesome.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mrs. Mercado, for your passion. I think everybody up here is in tears. And thank you, Dr. Guerrero. Thank you, Dr. Brown, this board, our superintendent, Dr. Ramsey. This is what we like to see. This is what we like to hear. We are not going to hide behind the numbers. If they're good, we love it. If they're bad, we're going to face it and we're going to fix it. So, this is one Fort Worth ISD, and on that note, it is 7:12, and we are adjourned.